I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Lauer, please call the [inaudible].
Sure. Ms. Shannafel will not be here tonight. Mr. Kozar?
Here.
Mr. O'Curry?
Here.
Mr. Steigel?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Dr. Prosko will not be here tonight.
Yeah, before we go forward, I just wanted to comment on why Dr. Prosko is not here. I know everybody on council, I think, is aware, but for the sake of the audience and anybody who's watching at home, aside from being husband, father of four girls, physician, Peter Township Councilman, Tom has somehow found time to found and serve as president on a charitable foundation devoted to children's charities and causes. TC Open is the name of it. Today is actually one of their fundraisers. It's a golf outing. They have another fundraiser coming up, I believe it's September 26th. That one is a sporting clay shoot. They, if you go on their website, it shows where the money's going. It's a great foundation, and I think the township should be proud to have somebody like that serving on council right now. So, yeah, he's definitely excused.
Thank you.
Moving on. Not seeing anything for social reports. Approval of minutes?
So moved.
Second. Okay, motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries. Next is audience comments. It's an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak, to address any matter with council for up to five minutes unless we extend it. Is there anybody? Mrs. Shader?
Yes, you know that leaf vacuuming is near and dear to my heart, okay? So, I want to ask the question, is it within the budget how much we spend on litigation?
Annually?
Yeah.
I don't think we have a set number.
Not how much we spend on litigation, but there is a line item that deals with legal expenses, which could be litigation, but could also be...
Can I see, is the budget online? Can I see that?
Absolutely.
All right, okay, I'll check that out. All right, I'm doing a survey, as you know, I like to do surveys. So I'm doing a survey of different townships to see what they spend on different things, okay? And the only other thing...
Depends on who their solicitor is, in my opinion.
Okay.
We think we have a good one, sir.
All right, so anyway, the other thing I want to tell you is that, because I promised that I would let you know, but the hearing for the gentleman who was shooting the gun on Thomas Road, so everybody, so you know this, if you want to go to the hearing, you're all welcome there, you know, because we should actually show up to show that we are concerned about things like that. It's on June 18th at 9:00 a.m. before Judge Costanzo, okay? It was with Pettit, but it went back to Costanzo, so hope to see you there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
John McCarthy, 105 Greenbrier Drive. Several months ago, I had a car key problem, and I wanted to thank Officer King for coming to my rescue and helping me out. He's a terrific officer. I was very happy to meet him. The second thing is, I sent an email to Mr. Lauer, I think, Mr. Ross, and Mr. Kozar. I was in the Peters Township Library on May 18th, and in the Memorial Day book display, they had what I considered the American flag, our flag, displayed inappropriately, and I sent you photos of that. So I wanted to know if you thought I was correct in it was displayed inappropriately?
I would agree with you that it was inappropriate, that I can guarantee you that won't happen again. One of the things I would encourage, that when you see that, to immediately speak to the library staff, and had I known that at the time, it would have been corrected immediately. But I only knew that afterwards.
Well, I thank you for your prompt response to my email. It was very, very fast. And Mr. Kozar, you were the only counsel that responded to my email. I didn't get it to all of you, but I did get it to you, and you responded very promptly. Do you have anything to add to that?
I spoke with Ms. Love. She recognized that that shouldn't have been done, and it assured us it will not be done again.
Thank you very much.
Wait a minute. I think you should educate us on what was the inappropriate display exactly?
The flags were draped and held with a binder clip as opposed to being on a pole as they should appropriately be. I mean, the display that was there was one that was truly appropriate. It was a display related to Memorial Day. It featured lots of books that commemorate the service of individuals. But unfortunately, when the display was put up, they used the flag as a decoration, but did it in a way that probably, that was, in fact, inappropriate, so...
So the intentions were good, it was just lack of understanding of the flag code?
It's very simple civics to know how to display the flag, and the library is an information center, so it's easy to look up that information.
I don't disagree. Thank you.
Too bad Monica's here.
Yeah, she knew all that stuff. Anybody else? Okay, and we'll move into unfinished business, which there is none. New business, the first is going to be a resolution amending the Peters Township Police Department Policy and Procedures Manual.
So the Peters Township Police Department is an accredited agency under the Pennsylvania Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. It's administered by the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association, and the township is just one of 170 police departments statewide to earn that accreditation. One of the things it requires is that existing policies and procedures be reviewed on at least an annual basis to make sure that they adhere to the current policing standards. So what you have in front of you tonight are six general orders that are being amended. Captain Emery is here, who spends most of his time working on this, along with the chief. If you have questions, Judge can answer those for you.
Does anybody have any questions?
I looked over, and I don't have any questions.
Yeah, I did too. Do you guys have anything you want to touch on, or, I mean, I don't think there's anything that's really changing the way policing is done in the township, it's...
No, sir.
Since you guys are sitting in the back, you might as well come up and say a few words.
Thank you. No, there's nothing major that we are changing in any of these. The one thing that is actually, is the last item, we changed everything from the previous chief's orders to mine. So every single one of the orders has been changed in that way, and Captain Emery worked really, really hard to get all that done. There's a lot of computer work that has to go into being able to do that, and he did a fantastic job. We will have a couple more things that are going to come before you. We're just not quite ready at this point yet to do that, so...
All right, I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Number 06-01-24, amending the Peters Township Police Policy Manual. Second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion? You guys have this one?
When I read something like this, I find it very helpful to find the old and the new alongside, or some way to identify what it is that's being changed. I don't know in the future.
I was going to say, and you can in this, because what Captain Emery did was, correct me if I'm wrong, all of the things that are added and new are bold printed.
If you'd told me that as I'm reading it, probably we'd have had some significance, but, I mean, I'd...
Well, in the future, sir, if you'd like, we can provide you with the old one in addition to the new one as well, if you would like that.
I think I would have been fine if I had, was cognizant of what you were doing. Go ahead, vote.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five, nothing.
Is there any need or concern over some of the incidents that have occurred outside of the township relative to people being stopped and alleging illegal searches or bodily confrontations of searches? Are we clear in where we are with that?
We're very clear, plus our rules and regulations. You're actually working on the searches right now, if I remember correctly.
I'm, there was a section I had to amend and add some verbiage for actual, for search warrants. Our policies do dictate and inform officers how to conduct searches and when searches are legal, and also that our body cams are activated, so everything we do is on camera.
I just was thinking that as time has passed, it was probably something that should be visited, and thank you.
Yes. One of the things we also have is the most recent case law that allows, or what allows searches to be done, is also linked to our general orders. So the absolute most recent case, there's only one case law case attached to our general orders, and it is that exact topic, so...
Has it been some time since I brought up the police academy relative to citizens' participation? Have we had a recent one, or do we have one in the future?
We have one scheduled in April. We only had five people sign up for it, so we canceled it, and we're going to revisit that for the fall. We're hoping to get at least 10 people for that.
I think when I went through, that was probably about the size, yeah?
Yeah, we don't want to do it for less than 10, so we're hoping to get more. We're going to try and advertise that a little bit.
How about reaching out to the high school students?
We can do that. Yeah, we have, we have somebody there every day, so...
I think, you know...
Yeah, that'd be good then. I know we have looked into this, and one of our school resource officers is looking into it, having a citizen police academy specifically for students, so more adapted towards younger students. I think we're going to try to do...
It's a career path, too, so it's...
Correct, it absolutely is.
Absolutely.
As you might know, relative to, you know, that, relative to the fire department academy. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Next item will be a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development under the Act 13, Watershed Restoration and Protection. Is that right?
Program.
Grand program, okay. For the Briar Cliff Pollute, I can't talk now, Briar Cliff Polluting Reduction, Land Play and Restoration Project. I think, I don't know if anybody wants to discuss that project. I think it's been beaten to death.
Yeah.
It's an unfunded mandate from the state, and I guess this grant would help to offset some of the required funds for that.
And Gary, the only thing I do want to, want to tell you is that we have a obligation to have taken this project and completed it in the first five years of our MS4 permit, and we have not done that. And there will be a point in time where, whether we get funding or not, we will have to go ahead with this project, because the hammer that DEP has is freezing all state funds coming to Peters Township, including things like the liquid fuels money and the pension funds, and you can't afford to have that happen. So we're going to continue to attempt to find places to have, to help us fund this, but at some point in time, if that doesn't happen, the township's going to have to spend its own money to make this happen.
And I think, I think you wisely pointed out in the past that that's the kind of project that the residents are going to look at and say, what the hell do we get for a million dollars?
Oh, I, yes.
Okay. Absolutely. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 06-02-24, authorizing the submittal of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for a grant under the Watershed Restoration and Project Protection Program for Partial Funding of the Briar Cliff Stream Restoration Project.
Second.
I would have done it just like so, but...
Okay. Motion in the second. Any further discussion from council or members of the audience? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five, nothing. Next item will be approval for recording purposes of the Simmons subdivision on drawings, shown on drawings prepared by the Harshman CE Group dated October 26, 2023, for David Simmons.
So this is actually a simple subdivision. The parcel that's shown on the top is owned by the estate of Earl and Dolores Simmons, and what is being proposed is the subdivision of that property, which would transform that parcel, it would connect it to the larger parcel that's owned by, by two of the Simmons family. So what you end up with is a configuration like this. It meets our ordinances, it's a recommendation of the planning commission and the council staff, but it's approved, and I believe all of the conditions that were established have been met.
Is the blue lot in this configuration a development?
It's a buildable lot. It's a flag lot.
Or a single...
Yeah.
Or would it also have a combined driveway option?
I think the simple answer is it's just for a single-family lot. However, if they could somehow configure access for multiple lots, then yes, you could see multiple single-family homes on it, but they would have to all, each individual lot has to be able to have some type of access out to the public street, and it has to be at least half acre in size.
And it's 50 feet, right? The access?
Yes.
I'm looking at it.
That flagpole is 50 feet.
50.04, they hit it right on the head.
So we're not developing, at this point, any sort of isolated parcel?
No. The intention on the larger parcel is to continue the form.
Can we put a stipulation or condition on it that it cannot be further subdivided?
Well, it can't be just based on its layout, because if you subdivide it again, you've only got a 50-foot right of way in to begin with, so you couldn't do a second one.
So that would relate to the blue, I thought it was...
Right. Yeah, I guess it would be pretty...
Comment would be addressing the gold area also.
Well, I guess they could always ask the zoning board for a variance, right?
Yeah, they're pretty lenient.
That's true. I'll make a recommendation that the council approve for recording purposes, the Simmons subdivision, as shown in the drawings prepared by Harshman CE Group dated October 26, 2023, for David Simmons.
Second.
Okay, the motion in the second. Any further discussion from council, audience? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's five, nothing. Item D is authorization of the appropriate township official to execute a subdivision improvement agreement with Environmentally Sound Solutions LLC related to Westbury Phase Two Plan of Lots.
So on December 19th, Peters Township Council approved the Westbury Preliminary Plan of Lots, and on August 28th, 2023, council approved the plan, the Westbury Phase Two Plan of Lots. Before council denied is the subdivision improvement agreement for the Westbury Phase Two Final Plan between Environmentally Sound Engineering and Peters Township. And so what this agreement does, it's an extension of the approval process that provides the guarantees that, in fact, the public improvements that are provided for in the plan will be completed. It also provides the ability for the developer to record the plan so that, in fact, lots can be sold and houses can be built. So it's my recommendation that council will authorize the appropriate township official to execute the subdivision agreement.
So moved. Second. Any further discussion from council? What in the audience? Okay, so none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, it's going to be 401. Item E, award of a contract for the 2024 Road Rejuvenated Project.
So the 2024 budget includes an appropriation of $2,805,000 for road and storm water improvement projects, of which $2,345,169 is currently committed. The remaining available funds total $459,832. Bids for the 2024 rejuvenated project were open on May 30th. There's only one contractor that submitted a bid, Pavement Technologies, and if you recollect in years past, that has been the...
That's it.
...case as well. Their price this year represents a 2.5% increase over the price that we bid for 2023. Given the total square yards it's been specified, the total bid is $167,347, and it's my recommendation that council award a unit price contract to pavement technology totaling $167,000.
So moved. Second. Motion in the second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that carries 5-0. Item F will be award of a contract for the 2024 Detention Pond Rehabilitation Project.
So based upon the prior motion, the remaining funds are $292,484. The township accepted bids on May 31st for, for the rehabilitation of two existing storm water detention tanks. The low bid was, sorry.
Mr. Sarsky.
Okay, excavating for a total of $25,400. They've done this work for us in the past and have done it in an acceptable manner. It's my recommendation that we award them a contract.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any further discussion?
I think we want to give the last that ends.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five, nothing. Next item will be payrolls, payroll and bills. I reviewed those prior to this evening's meeting, find them all to be in order, and move that may be approved.
All second.
Motion in the second. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Number seven is just a notification from EQT concerning the unconventional wells that are going to be installed on the other side of 43, it looks like. So I don't know if anybody needed to discuss that further.
Nope.
How about the minutes? Does anybody wish to discuss anything?
Wasn't there one on a, wasn't there one that was, oh no, that's the next item. I'm sorry.
miscellaneous, any hearing board report?
Yeah, isn't there something coming up there or something?
Yes.
I didn't remember what it is, and I don't remember what...
There is in front of the zoning hearing board this month, a request for a variance by Cohen Markets. This is the market that sits up on the corner of Thompsonville Road and East McMurray Road. The variance they are seeking is, they currently have four pumps at this location. They're, they're, because it's a non-conforming use, they have the, have the ability to expand it by 20%, so that what they want to have there are five pumps. And, you know, one of the things that the township staff believes is that this may afford us, granting that variance may afford us an opportunity to address what we hear as a concern from the neighbors concerning the amount of light and the banding around the sign. So it may well be in the township's interest to try to strike a deal where they're granted that variance, but at the same time, we get controls on the lighting that may exceed that which the ordinance provides for, so...
Is there anything that you can see that can be done regarding that Thompsonville entrance?
The Thompsonville entrance is going to, the one, the Thompsonville entrance that exists right now, the one that is straight off the edge of the East McMurray, is going to disappear, and it's going to be pushed down the hill.
Yeah, I think that's the problem, is it's pushing it right in front of the driveways of those homes.
Well, I think, from a safety standpoint, I think this is a much preferred, in fact, PennDOT won't allow that, that entrance that exists right off of the intersection.
That's going to be a full-service driveway, too. It's not going to be a right-in, right-out, is it?
It's going to be, no, it's going to be a full-service.
I think you just go on the...
Well, yeah, but the only person that's going to want to go in McMurray is someone who's coming over from about the park. If you're going the other way, you're not going to want to cut across, because you're going to be beyond the traffic light. Everyone, everyone that's going to try to go in there coming from this direction is going to go to the light, make a left, and then go down that driveway.
Yeah. No, I actually think, well, what's happened now is, and I think is going to continue to happen, people are going to go up to where the intersection, the new intersection of Bittersweet, make a left, and turn in.
This won't be open 24/7, right?
It could be, but I don't think that's their intention.
Okay. I've just never seen a gas station before that has an odd number of pumps, because usually the way they're set up, they're two behind the other, right? So...
Well, there's four pumps, but...
Oh, so are you...
It's eight dispensing.
Oh, okay.
That's right, that's right.
Or in this case, five and ten.
Two, two, that's right.
Okay, all right. So when you're saying five, so you mean five...
There'll be 10 spaces to pump.
Okay, all right, okay, that makes more, okay, all right. That makes more sense. I was trying to figure, do the math in my head, how you would have...
Are they tearing a whole building down?
Yes.
Are they going to push it back a little?
Yes.
When does, when does the intersection actually get started?
Well, I was going to say, this year is devoted to utility relocations, and the gas company is either in there now or getting ready to be in there.
So we should expect that next year, everyone to be using Brookwood, right, as the way to, is that going to be the post to detour?
Brookwood probably will not be the post to detour, because the state's detours are always on the right roads.
But it will be the detour.
The unofficial detour.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know that there's any way to address the lights that are coming off on the Thompsonville, but that's, I think, the biggest concern that I see.
Well, it's a concern, too, because of the, as you're coming up Thompsonville, the lights are up here, right? I mean, they're up the hill, so it's how do you turn them so that they're not, there's a natural light?
I'm saying the headlights coming out of the driveway shining into the...
No, that's what I mean.
Were there houses across the street? Is that, are there houses across the street that entrance? That's where, that's going to, where that entrance is going to be?
I don't know about that.
Well, you can't let them only have one way in, one way out. I don't know where else you would put it. I'm guessing that's probably, PennDOT probably has said, right, it has to be so many feet. They're not going to let it be where it is now.
They will not let it be where it is, though.
Well, maybe they don't need to have that part lit.
Safety, if you can. But I think what Gary's... But I think what Gary's concerned about is the cars coming down, not shining.
Oh, I was going to bring it to the house there.
But remember, the approval of a site plan for a commercial building doesn't come to council. It will be done by the planning commission. So you can take a position with them, but they're going to decide it.
You could take a position to the ZHB, ask them that condition to any approval.
See, I don't know, how, how could you possibly deflect the headlights coming down the hill? There's no way to do it.
I guess how restrictions, you don't think it's going to be 24/7? Is there any way we can prevent that going forward?
What hours is it open down?
Oh, it opens at 10 or 12. No, it's not 12.
I think it's 10.
Yeah, I think it's 10, because I leave often, I stop there on the way out.
Could Mudry look at it from an elevation standpoint, if there's hedges or some sort of, that doesn't interfere with traffic?
Yeah, but I don't see, I don't see how hedges are going to help you, John, because that road's straight. You're coming, you know, cars are coming straight down.
Yeah.
I don't know. It would help the people on either side, I guess, if you planted trees going up both sides, but for whoever's right across the street from it, and it's...
Maybe they can plant the big trees there.
Put trees in their front yard, right?
Yeah, but still, I mean, you're coming down, there's a higher one.
Yeah, but they're going to be coming right down. I mean, I would be curious, I mean, Gary's right, there's a house right across the street. Just looking at that, you can't tell how it lines up. You know, it may, it may well be that that comes down there, the house isn't directly across the street at somebody's driveway.
Well, if it's a house, it's somebody else's.
Well, I mean, but there's some space between them. I don't know, does it come down right?
Well, there's a house on the corner, right?
The old, that old home.
Oh, and then there's, there's one with the, with the retaining walls, and then there's an it-is.
I'm saying there's a house, right?
So he's the third one down.
Can I think of one? With this house?
That's not very good, but...
You know, I would say we would at least like to see that the hours of operation don't increase. And if we can get the zoning hearing board to make that a condition of the variance approval, I'd be okay with that. Because then, if you're only, if you're talking about the lights being in use, you're right, six months a year, it doesn't get dark till 9 o'clock at night, and if they're closing at 10, it's just an hour making. Now, wintertime, someone's going to be aggravated from about 5:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m., but five or six months out of the year, it won't make that much of a difference.
So, so we'll go to the zoning hearing board and talk about hours of operation. We'll also talk about the lighting, because quite frankly, that's what we get, we get talked about, so...
I think we need to remind the zoning hearing board, they have to read what it is that they have to prove in order to consider granting a variance, too. It's like, in my mind, when I read what you give me here, it's, they're not doing their job. Up at the top there, where you can get in and out.
What might your natural expansion?
So do we want to make that our recommendation?
I think we should also, I mean, I'm presuming they're going to have to clear cut the site, right? Because based on. Paul, Paul, do we know, are they, are they going to be able to keep any of the trees that are there now on the backside, or is that all going to be graded out? Because if that's all going to be graded out, there should be some condition put on that they replant that, because otherwise they're going to be in somebody's backyard.
There is a buffer in the landscape, in their landscaping plan. There is a buffer along the, I guess it'd be the western side there.
I'm both, I mean, I'm talking on the East McMurray side, because beyond, there should be a buffer all the way around behind the parking lot, in my opinion, coming all the way down to Thompsonville. There definitely is on the left-hand side of the property, as we look at it. Yeah. But how about the top, because there's.
Well, the north is another, it's another commercial property. I think it's a parking lot you're looking at.
There's an office building there. There's trees there, and they're probably on the office building line, I would think.
No, I think that their parking lot comes up to the, if you look at the drawing, at the top.
The dentist office.
Yeah, I think that is.
Well, that's a good statement. Let's address all of them, then.
Yeah, I think that should be addressed, because, I mean, those buildings are right back there. And if they're going to, I don't know where the line is and how many of those trees there are on their property as opposed to the neighbor's property, but, you know, want to see that all cleared out and then there be no buffer between them and the neighbors, even though, even despite the fact it's a commercial, it's a commercial building in the front, but then there's houses behind it, isn't there?
No.
No, it's empty.
Is it empty?
Yeah.
They were originally going to build apartments back there, but that didn't happen.
Is that good?
Okay.
Because there's a house right next to the office building, right?
On the other side.
Right, 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 okay.
There's, but there's, what's that street? Full, isn't there like that log cabin on there?
On the other side.
That's next to it.
That's the other side of Ford.
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, that's what I think we're going for.
So as a follow-up to the conversation with regard to cellular towers in Peters Township, on Tuesday, after the meeting, I contacted Verizon, T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, the individuals that were here who are commercial developers of cell tower sites, Diamond Communications, to ask them the question of where is it in Peters Township? Cell towers are needed to provide coverage. The red dots represent T-Mobile's answer to that question. The, the blue circle is Verizon's answer to that question. And the people that were here last meeting are the people that had met with us for the idea of having a tower at the Station 1. If, and again, these are just general locations. They don't necessarily need to be specific locations, but that tower at Station 1 would have to be, yes, would have to be 190 feet tall. That's a very substantial structure. The, the ones, the yellow diamonds is actually a, yes, is something that was done by Diamond. Diamond is, again, a, a tower company, and when they looked at AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, and Verizon, they believed that these three locations are the locations that are essential. So the diamond that is far to the left is sitting on the high school, Rolling Hills Park property. As you can see, T-Mobile also has a need in that area. The, the one to the, to the top, again, this is a pairing of what, what Diamond and T-Mobile have seen, and the other one down towards, towards Venetia, again, you have that. You know, one of the things that Mark and I were talking about briefly is that if you wanted to address this, one of the ways, and again, one of the things good about Peters Township is we have always subjected ourselves to our own zoning ordinance. And there's a, there's a legal principle out there that says we're not subject to our own zoning ordinance. But I think when we choose not to follow it, we create problems for people in town who can't understand how it is we go about doing something we, what others do. But I think you could amend the zoning ordinance and address some of these, these concerns for these tower sites. If you allowed towers on publicly owned property that don't have to be co-located. So you could put a tower in Rolling Hills Park or at the high school property, or somewhere on the school district property.
You have towers already in Rolling Hills Park, so why would you compromise the co-location criteria there?
Well, because that's, to be honest with you, that's not their preferred way to do that.
Their preferred way versus what that would accomplish, right?
The other thing that you could do is to have an overlay zone that takes large agricultural tracts and create an overlay so that in fact you can place towers on those agricultural properties, you know, and the advantage of which is they're not developed. And it's one thing that when you have a tower placed near your home and you have no control over that. It's another thing when you choose to build in that vicinity. And one of the things that we did on the lower end of the township when a tower went up, we created a setback that was as high as the tower was. And so if they're putting in 90 or 100-foot towers, you're going to have a setback of any structure within 100, 110 feet of that tower. I think it avoids the problem that we have up in, along Druid where you have houses that have been built so close to those, those utilities. Question is.
My comment over here, though, too, is, how high did you tell me they wanted that tower to be?
190.
You're almost 100 foot higher.
That's right.
There than you are back line.
That's right. That tower, if that tower gets moved, in fact, T-Mobile says that tower needs to be, each of their locations are showing there, they would need towers about 90 feet tall. So you want to pick the high elevations. There's no question about that.
I noticed for the first time, I must have been looking out the window at the trolley this morning, a new tower right alongside the trolley line. It probably is in the range of the height that we're talking about, really nothing more than a five-foot.
Yeah, some of the, they put, like, there's one over by Cool Springs, they put, they make it look like a pine tree. They put green on them to try to hide it.
The only problem, man, we don't grow sequoias in western Pennsylvania. They always stick out. I've seen these, and it always looks kind of funny.
I thought it was like the Festivus pole.
Right, right, right.
Not just that pole, that'd be okay.
Thank you for at least getting this for, you know, the topic to talk about.
The question is, maybe when we get together with the planning commission, this is a discussion. Is the idea of allowing towers on public property something you're interested in doing?
It depends on what public car.
I think we need to look at it.
I agree.
From a very broad sense.
But, but the advantage is, the lease would be with either the township or the school district. I don't know that any other public entity in Peters Township owns land. And just because you create that, doesn't mean you have to grant a lease.
Right.
So if it's in an inappropriate area, you just don't grant a lease. That's like, you know, the fire department. If it was allowed there and you thought 100, and I personally think a 190-foot tower at that location is inappropriate, you don't have to grant them a lease.
See, I think we should look into the overlay, doing it in agricultural areas. Certainly, we shouldn't plop them down in existing residential areas, because like you said, that wouldn't be fair to the people who bought houses there. You know, if it can be done, you know, on vacant farmland, then anyone who buys a house there, you know, buys it knowing that they're going to have a tower in their backyard. But if you go and try to slap one in some existing development now, I mean, I just don't see how that'd spare it anybody.
And that, that existence of that tower, and I'm trying to think what the name of that plan is, Orchard?
Hill.
Orchard Hill. That did not stop anybody from buying a home.
How tall is that one? Do you have any idea?
It's, that's probably close to the 190.
Is it?
It's, it's high.
It's huge.
It's high. And the fall radius around it is 110 feet. So maybe it's, maybe it's 90, then.
Yeah, it must be, because it's.
100, 100 feet.
So another 100 feet on top of that?
Yeah. Because what they do is.
Pretty big base, dude.
It is big, but yeah, so if it does fall, it wouldn't hit any structure, yeah.
Yeah.
They can collapse from you themselves, no.
190-foot tower at the fire department.
You would say, where would you, you'd have to put it way up in the back.
Well, in fact, where, where they showed it is behind that, you know, that raised second lot. They showed it right there.
Be right next to the proposed nursing home, then.
Yeah, that'd be right, yeah.
All right, well, it's a good start of dialogue.
Yeah, okay.
Is there anything anybody would like to see on the next agenda? No, nothing. I guess we're done then. Thanks.